Everybody who's watching on the live stream currently, we're going to start in just a minute. Just giving folks other minutes to sort of trickle in here, but thank you for joining us. Again, for those of you just joining, we're going to get started in about thirty forty-five seconds here. Just giving a couple, a minute for a couple of folks to trickle in. Jessica, I'm going to go ahead and get started. And then as folks come in, they can, we'll get them sort of caught up. Again, thank you so much for joining us today. This is the Arizona State Board of Education's A through F study session. Number one, focusing on growth and proficiency. The board will be holding a series of study sessions over the next few months to dive into the different dominant indicators of the A through F system. The goal of these study sessions is to learn and to ask questions. Thanks, Melissa. I'm going to start that again, so apologize for those of you who need to hear it twice. Thank you so much for joining us today. This is the Arizona State Board of Education, A through F, School Accountability System Study Session. This is the first in a series of study sessions the boards will be holding. Today's study session will focus on growth and proficiency. The goals of these study sessions are, one, to learn, to have presentations from the Department of Education about each of the indicators in the A through F system, the dominant indicators, in order for the board and the field and folks watching here and at home to learn more about the system and for the board to be able to provide guidance to our amazing technical advisory committees who meet every month to review and refine the system. I'm going to call this meeting to order at nine oh four AM. I will note this is a study session, so there will be no voting occurring today. This is again, a time to learn. I will note for the record that we do have some board members with us today, including Board President Catherine Haley, Board Vice President Dr. Scott Hagerman, member Carla Krevikas is with us, Superintendent Horn is with us, and I believe I caught everybody. And then we have representatives from board staff, Sean Ross, Executive Director of the Board, Bruce Duplante, our Deputy Director, Jessica Mueller, who's our Research and Data Guru, and Melissa Becerra, who's our Office Manager. We have ADE staff with us today from the Accountability Team, Sean Smith and Toby Butler. And then we are very especially thankful for members of the Technical Advisory Committee making time to be with us today, including the Chair of the Technical Advisory Committee, Sean Rickert, Jason Piankowski, who's our Vice Chair, and some other members who will be joining along the way. So again, just to reiterate, the, the purpose of this is to learn and to ask questions for the board. No decision-making will happen, no voting will happen in the meeting today. Additionally, these sessions are less formal than board meetings. So while in a board meeting, a response would begin with President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. This is a less formal environment, so questions can come during the meeting. Board members in particular, please feel free to ask questions as they arise and, and we'll go from there. So I'm going to first turn this over to Jessica Mueller, our Policy and Research Administrator, to share about the board's review of the A through F Principles of Agreement. Jessica?
Thank you so much, Executive Director Ross. I'm going to share my screen with a presentation about the results for the surveys that you all have been participating in this summer. So these surveys were sent out in April and July, and the reason why we're conducting this is that the board last approved a guidance document for the A through F system in 2014. And we like to just take a, take a, take a temperature and see if that's the reading and the direction that the current board would like to remain in, or if there's some potential changes that we need to make, either to be in alignment with statute, alignment with policy, and, and anything that we need technically as well. So in the first phase, five board members, seven board members were able to participate. And then in the second phase, five board members were participates. In the Phase One, we asked them to look through each of the three pieces of the Principles Agreement, which is philosophical agreements, technical agreements, and implementation agreements. And we asked board members to identify what are their top priorities, what are any missing elements, and what are any suggested changes. So here you can see the results for the philosophical agreements. Top priorities were seen as measuring growth over time, using multiple measures beyond the state summative test scores in ELA, math, or science, having equity to achieve that summative grade of an A status. And then with missing elements, there was some questions about how to include parental engagement in the accountability system, a focus on social emotional well-being, as well as ensuring that our career readiness metrics are balancing equity for all students groups. We suggested changes is really fine tuning how we are addressing the complexity of simplicity and transparency, and really asking to define what is a truly excellent school in regards to that college and career readiness, philosophical agreement. With the technical agreements, to surprise of making nobody, a top priority for board members remains data validity and reliability, and being able to replicate the results of the state accountability system as it's calculated by the Arizona Department of Education. Some missing elements possibly is more disaggregated information about subgroups. This is information that is in particular on the school report cards. So we are constantly trying to balance what we're communicating through the state accountability system and what we communicate through the school report cards. Comparability across different school types, so this might be a traditional to alternative school comparability. It might be a hybrid school to an elementary school. And then suggested changes we have defining what post-secondary success means more precisely. With implementation agreements in Phase One, it remains true that we want to keep stakeholder involvement very high with developing methodology. We do this through our technical advisory committees as well as different approaches with receiving public comments from the field, surveying different members of the field that we're in communication with about accountability, and really hearing the feedback that we're getting from the department and the board, and infusing that within topics to our technical advisory committees, reviewing anything that's submitted to us. Priorities also to pilot test measures before they are fully rolled out. So that's something that we have to look at defining what we mean by pilot testing. Missing elements, maybe having more public friendly communication and, and accessibility of materials. And then the desire for professional development is for educators and, and in the field of how it's state accountability. The suggested change was to update the measures more frequently to remove any redundancy or outdated metrics, and this is a frequent topic, I would say, in our technical advisory committee meetings. So that is the Phase One feedback. Would anybody have any questions before we get to Phase Two? Okay, seeing none, move along. On Phase Two, we went a little bit deeper. We wanted to drill into some of these things, like that question of what does post-secondary success mean? What are some of those missing measures that you would want to have included? Or how do you want to elevate certain measures? And so first, we asked people to, the board members, to identify their preferences for different indicators. This question was specifically, besides proficiency and growth, the other measures that are in the system, what is the importance to the board members? For most important, it's tie for board members of chronic absenteeism and early literacy outcomes, which are two indicators in the acceleration readiness component of the K model. And then it would be second most important, it starts to be special education inclusion, acceleration of subgroup performance, and still remains very high as chronic absenteeism, early literacy throughout. In nine twelve, we have fewer metrics that we are measuring. We have college and career readiness, graduation rate, and English language proficiency outcomes. And overall, the college and career readiness is a top focus for the board members who replied to this survey. We also wanted to ask, what should be the primary factor of all of the indicators for earning a high or low summative letter grade in the K eight system? We see that it is divided here with proficiency and a relative balance between all of the factors, being the proficiency, growth, EL learners, and acceleration readiness. In nine twelve, you see that there's more division of what is the primary factor for the achievement of a higher or lower letter grade in nine twelve. Relative balance is still the winner, but there's more division of cross-growth, college and career readiness, and proficiency. And we asked a question about getting to the point of how we want to be more accessible for public. Would we want to have different manuals and fact sheets for different audiences? And that was something that is supported by the board members. And so I just wanted to summarize that there is a focus on retaining all of these outcomes, like early literacy and chronic absenteeism and college and career readiness. There's a desire to continue the technical soundness and public usability of the model, whether that is, you know, the, the technical guidance having the formulas, for example, is the change that was made a few years ago. The desire is to continue to use a balanced grading model overall, while keeping that focus on proficiency at the K eight level, and that they would like us to continue to lean on policy and technical experts in developing the model. And so always keeping the information fresh that we're gathering about state accountability. So at the next steps, what we plan to do is we plan to revise the A through F Principles of Agreement document based on the feedback. That will help us also identify if there are any remaining questions. And we did present this to the technical advisory committees this month, and they provided some feedback about how we want to include this summative versus indicator scoring within the Principles Agreement. And we might look at developing a second document that is specific to the indicator scoring system and what that is trying to accomplish and what we can accomplish with it. And so we'll present those documents to the technical advisory committees, and then it'll be reviewed by the board in the future. So are there any more questions at this time about the Principles Agreement surveys and where we're headed?
Thanks, Jessica. And, you know, for those in attendance and those watching, we wanted to open with table setting, those, those Principles of Agreement, because obviously they're the philosophical foundation upon which the system has been built and operated for a number of years at this point. And so we're doing that work with the board. We're really thankful for the board for providing that feedback and, and we'll be continuing to share that feedback with the board as that process evolves. Superintendent Horn?
Yes, and the first, in the first chart, I saw the word equity. I'd like to understand what that means.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Horn. So that was a word that was specifically used by board members in response. And it was how each subgroup is measured, or is each subgroup measured the same way in the system? Or are they measured in different ways? So it's more of a data equity, as far as what we're, what we're measuring and how we're actually communicating that to the field, more than it is equity in any other sense. It's about ensuring that every subgroup is measured in the same way across the system.
So everyone's treated the same regardless of race or gender?
Yeah, and Superintendent Horn, I think the word I would use is consistency, the consistency of measure. Yeah, equity is sort of, is a loaded word. The, the probably the more appropriate term would be consistency. So yeah, it's, it's more of a data measure than, than it was in any other realm. But thank you for pointing that out. We'll kind of look at that vocabulary as we move the survey forward with you all. Other questions? All right, well, we're going to move to the next section. Before we get to the other presentation, I just want to take a moment to thank, recognize the incredible work of the technical advisory committees led by Sean and Jason, and then our Double A-TAC, our Alternative Assess, A through F Advisory Committee, led by Binky Jones and Mary Burke. Both of those groups are amazing. We have an AOI A-TAC as well. They meet monthly and sometimes more than monthly, and dedicate and volunteer their time to working really diligently to review the system, review the data produced by the system, and to work towards a more perfect system. So we're very thankful for them. Equally thankful for board staff, Sean Smith and Toby Butler. I are, worked tirelessly to provide information to the, the tax, to the board department and the board, and we're very thankful for them, and then from our team as well. Obviously, Jessica leads a lot of this work and does an amazing job. So thank you to all of you for working towards a better system. Today's study session is going to focus on four key questions the tax are currently wrestling with. And we're bringing them to you now, so you can hear their, we can hear your perspective on these questions, identify your thoughts and concerns, and then make sure we can provide you with the information you need to take action, potentially take action at a future board meeting where voting would occur. Again, no voting in a study session. Sean Smith, the Director of Accountability and Research at the Arizona Department of Education, is going to sort of lead the bulk of the rest of this study session. Sean's going to focus first on the current system, brief overview, and then really dive into those questions and data related to those questions, and then obviously field questions from board members. So Sean, you want to take it away?
All right, does that show my screen okay there for everyone?
Yeah, we can see it.
Perfect. Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Sean. I'm excited to present this today. This has been both interesting work and it's felt very important. I want to explain, you know, as we're going into this, this has been a great opportunity to look at our system. There's a lot of good about the current system. You know, it, it works creatively and it finds solutions to fit within the statutory requirements within data availability. And this indicator scoring work has given us a really good opportunity to kind of take that to the next level, to say, all right, let's have some frank conversations about what's working well, what we can improve. And so as Sean mentioned, I want to outline the current system. I want to be real open about the challenges we face, but also in the background recognizing that there is a lot of great work that's been done here. We're very lucky to have a seven-year foundation with this data where we can even do this analysis. So kind of in that spirit of continuous improvement, as Sean Ross likes to say, we'll go ahead and move forward with, with what we're looking at. And so today, the focus of the presentation is going to be on the growth and proficiency indicators. As a foundation, I want to look at just some of the research. I think I've grounded this in two of the main research findings. So to simplify here, the research has found pretty consistently that accountability systems that have the greatest impact on school improvement, that lead to school improvement, focus on a communication function, right? So this differs slightly from an incentive or sticks or carrots kind of function. This is about what shows the, the most impact tends to be when accountability, as Sean said, communicates clearly. And, and that was kind of one of the findings in the, the survey that Jessica pointed out. So a focus on clear communication, and that, that makes common sense. If we can have a clear system that allows policymakers, educators, and community members all to discuss, to talk in the same language, and to understand the data in the same way, really that's where the most effective accountability springs from, is those communities can hold their schools accountable, more than just the Department of Education is going to put, you know, a letter on a spreadsheet, right? So communication is the foundational purpose. And then one of the other key findings is that effective accountability systems tend to focus on a range of students rather than target specific students at a certain performance level. So I'll come back to those two research findings quite a bit. And that's the frame that I'm kind of looking at some of these changes through. Real quick, before I proceed, any questions there?
Quick question, Sean, thank you so much. What do you mean specifically by a range of students? Can you unpack that a little further?
So a lot of times we'll hear the word, you know, the term bubble kids. So there's some unintended effects when a system overly focuses on, you know, the students at right on the edge of proficiency, of passing and not, for example. It can create an impact where students at other ranges of the performance bands get ignored. Like, hey, we're not going to worry about highly proficient too much because they've got a long way before they're falling out of it. We saw this in the school district I worked in. Our focus was on a really intensive focus on minimally proficient students and taking them out. And what we saw over a period of about three years was we get about fourteen percent of students every year out of mentally proficient, but we'd have eighteen to twenty backslide in from other proficiency levels. So that focus on one specific group has a counterintuitive or sometimes unintended effects where we can neglect the other ones. So when I say that, the research kind of says, you want an accountability system that makes every student visible, you don't want anybody falling through the cracks. Any other questions before we move forward? Great, thank you. All right, so in the current system, there are weights applied. So we have these three different models. There's the traditional K eight for elementary schools, there's the traditional high school model, and then there's the alternative model for schools that are serving. It tends to be students who are behind on credits, they're, I think in the statute it says they're not able to profit from a regular system of instruction. Here's how the, the weights stack out. Thirty percent proficiency for both traditional models. So thirty percent of a school's grade is going to be based on, is it average performance level is what we use. And then for traditional elementary schools, fifty percent of their grade is going to be based on the growth measure, and I'll get deeper into how that's measured. That decreases currently in, for traditional nine twelve schools. It's not a component of alternative school accountability. And you'll notice that for alternative schools, the proficiency indicator decreases in weight. Both of these, my understanding that the inception of both of these decisions to decrease the alternative proficiency indicator and to omit the growth measure were both driven by primarily age range of the students. So most of the students attending these tend to be seniors and beyond. So a lot of students aren't necessarily taking the test. Again, it's something to look at, but that is my understanding of the current decision behind those factors in alternative. And then, oh, I want to highlight just real quick the statutory lens, lens. These weights, you can kind of see in particular with traditional K eight. So the statute kind of highlights that we're supposed to have relevant indicators of school quality that are appropriate to assess the educational impact of a school during the academic year. So it's trying to narrow down, and that makes, I think that intent is clear why you'd want that. Trying to narrow it down so that the people that are working with the students at that time get feedback about what happened during that given year, so that they can adjust and improve. Questions on the weights before we continue next?
Dr. Hagerman?
Yeah, Sean, I'm, we'll have more questions when we get into the details of each section. But when we look at how this system was set up with these proportions, is there any way at this point to look back and say, hey, what we wanted to happen in this balancing act is working or not, is like thirty, fifty, thirty, twenty, the right thing? You know what I mean? Because like, people had to make assumptions without data back in fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. What do we know now?
That's a great question. I've got some visuals on that, but I think that's one of the key questions we want to examine is, and it's been highlighted by this indicator work. So, so far, you know, it seems to have not caused any problems when they're all put into this one summative grade. And, and the way you frame that is, is exactly what we wanted to look at today, is when we take these apart and now we're assigning these individual grades, do those weights still make sense? Are they working the way we want to individually and not just in that context? So I think that's an important way to frame what we're looking at today, yeah. Any other questions on this one? Okay, we'll jump right in. So to that point that Dr. Hagerman brought up, I think if, when we consider these individually and not add just as part of the bigger system, it's important to understand how each of these measures function, right? And that kind of tells us, are we using the right proportions? Are they doing what we want to? So the first table setting I want to look at with both these indicators, we want to understand that growth is a leading indicator, proficiency is a lagging indicator. And sometimes when I say those terms, people will say like, oh, one's good, one's bad. It's not that one's good or bad or useful or not useful. They're both useful, they're both helpful, they're both important, they just behave differently, right? So leading indicators tend to predict or signal future performance. Lagging indicators tend to show a status of what's done, what's happened up to this point, right? A shorthand way of thinking it, which is glossing over a lot of the technical details, but you can kind of think as leading, leading indicators are analogous to causes, and lagging indicators are analogous to effects, both important. We're going to get the best results if we use both of them appropriately and use each to its strengths. So just some comparisons, the growth indicator is our leading indicator in accountability. Proficiency is a lagging indicator. You can look at this as, you know, a leading indicator is if you wrote down how many days per week you flossed your teeth, and the lagging indicator would be when you go for a dental checkup and you see, you measure how many cavities you have, so kind of cause effect. An analogy I stole that I liked is, you know, if you look at football practice as a leading indicator, and then the score of the final game. And what I like about this analogy is it really highlights the usefulness and how we, how both of them work together. Ultimately, if you're a football coach, you're held to wins and losses. And in a sense, that's the only thing that really matters, right? That lagging indicator, how many games did you win? That's what you're going to be judged by. However, if you're a good football coach, you don't go into the locker room and just talk to your team about, hey, you know what our strategy is? Our strategy is we're going to win more and lose less. It's not really a strategy, you have to focus. A good coach is going to talk about the leading indicators, right? Here's what I'm seeing in practice. The conversation needs to be about techniques, skills, what's happening actionably and currently. The judgment and the quality call a lot of times is going to come down to that lagging indicator that builds in, it's capturing a whole lot of past activity. And so again, when we look at these weights, we need to be having conversations about where do we want the conversation happening? What can schools impact? And I'll bring it back to that statutory lens of how do we send signals to that intent of what's happening in the current school year, so that schools can monitor and adjust? Ultimately, what we want to happen is we want to create a conversation that influences the lagging indicator. And I think one of the shortcomings we see in a lot of accountability systems, and this is a conversation around the country, is we can overemphasize the lagging indicator in the conversation piece and the accountability piece, in the hopes of affecting that, when really driving a conversation about the leading indicators is what triggers the effect in proficiency. So you don't get growth by talking, talking, talking proficiency. You get proficiency by addressing growth. Questions there real quick before I kind of look at some examples of how Questions there real quick before I kind of look at some examples of how we see this in in practice?
Sean, this is. Thank you. Um, more than a question, I have a comment. I, that's that's such a good point that you're making. In our amazing country, we have such diversity of students, never an excuse, but I can, in the current system that I mean, I think forty percent of the students are either learning English or they have a special need. Doesn't mean that we can't. It just means that it might take us a little bit longer, but that growth is critical to see um, how and and with all students, right? But particularly in in our amazing nation with the diversity that that we have in our schools.
Great comment. Yeah. And I think that that captures exactly what I'm trying to say. We want the proficiency. And that helps us understand what, how we emphasize growth and how we set goals. Dr. Higerman?
Um, and we're going to see it when we look at the growth stuff, but uh, one of the questions coming up is the growth measure we use is comparative. So it's sometimes doesn't actually look like the kind of notion of growth that we think about. And then the other component we see, at least that I see, is because of the weighting by proficiency. You would look at different growth scores and think that they're comparable, but they might not be. Um, and so um, I I I appreciate this, but I also it brings worries when I think about our system. And I think also the fact that our system is so set up to be summative. And so you're thinking about a system that sort of projects and kind of helps us predict where kids are going. And our system is sort of set up, how do we add up all the scores to get a score that equals a letter grade? And they function somewhat differently.
Exactly right. Yeah. And and that's exactly what we want to look at. And I hope that's the work that we're kind of, you know, we're going to be getting the board is going to give that philosophical direction about how do we want to approach these? Um, and and exactly as you said, this indicator scoring work has prompted a lot of those questions where everything seems to be functioning okay right now. We get a summative letter grade. It doesn't seem to be causing any problems. But when we look under the hood, we start to see some of these dynamics that are maybe problematic when we start reporting these individually. Uh, member Krupikus?
I just want to echo Dr. Higerman's comments about the growth calculations being normative.
Thank you. Yes. And we'll, we'll take a look at that as well, like how do these normative factors influence things and where they can be problematic and where they can be helpful. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions before we move on there? Sean, Sean Rickert?
Sure. So I know, you know, in in the, in our ATAC meetings over the last couple of years, I mean, one of the, one of the challenges has always been that while while growth is is intended to be a leading indicator, the calculation of growth, because it's based on proficiency, it it's hard, it's hard to really use that as a tool to say, here's, here's what was going into the the sauce in in a school so that we can determine which is a school that is is at a high quality level. And so you know, that there, it it gets muddy when you realize that your leading indicator is largely built on your lagging indicator and therefore how much is it really giving you the the information about what's going into um, the the process of developing student achievement uh, at a school. So it it it's complicated and it's something that the ATAC and the AAATAC have been wrestling with for for many years. And especially when you try to break out the the growth indicator as a separate indicator from proficiency.
I think Sean encapsulates the history perfectly there. You know, Sean Russell mentioned a lot when we're doing this indicator work that we're trying to get indicators as standalone pieces. And what Sean Rickards bringing up is exactly right. I think in the initial design of the system, we looked at this lagging indicator proficiency. And there were some current concerns about how it was behaving, how it was meeting those statutory requirements. And because it was a summative system, the design became, we're going to introduce some of those lagging indicator concerns, we're going to try and control for them within the leading indicator. And now there's much, there's a, there's a much stronger case for having those function separately. And, you know, having growth function cleanly as a leading indicator, having proficiency function cleanly as a lagging indicator and not work to balance the two out by kind of mixing like Sean Rickards describing. Because and and Dr. Higerman mentioned that as well, like the mixture of the two tends to be where we get the the confusion of those signals. And again, coming back to that research I said at the beginning, um, and a lot of folks have hit on this already. One of the key functions of an accountability system, if it's going to work, is clear communication.
I think a lot of what you're discussing is coming up. So let's let's maybe move forward. Uh, we'll hold off questions for a second. Because I think a lot of what's in the ether here is is directly addressed by your slide. So maybe let's move into those and then we'll see if those questions uh, as they continue.
Perfect. Thank you. So I'll hit a few uh, visuals here just to kind of illustrate. Again, you guys are uh, hitting the the exact things we need to do as Sean Ross just mentioned. So here's a comparison of how we can kind of use lagging leading data in combination and what both can provide us. So here's two schools. Um, these are real schools. Yeah, both have the same average performance level. So if we just look at on a scale of one through four, one minimally proficient, four highly proficient, we average out all the scores, both of them at two point seven. So that's close to proficiency. This is an indicator that most of their students are kind of leaning towards proficiency. Based strictly on the lagging indicator average performance, it's really hard to make a distinction between which school is doing better, which school is doing worse. And in particular, again, coming to that, back to that statutory uh, intent of examining impacts of the current year, the lagging indicator doesn't give us a whole lot. And we look at these and say like, hey, both these are pretty good, I guess. If we bring in the leading indicator and we look at their growth, school A in blue there has the growth and average student growth percentile of seventy three. And now uh, let me address, this is kind of the issue that Dr. Higerman and Sean Rickert brought up. I'm giving you these numbers without any kind of the mixing and stuff that we do. So this number seventy three is kind of the raw growth number without any of the baggage that we have kind of in the current system. So this is a measure of very high growth here. And what we see over on the red side is the school has low growth. If we look at their history over the past four years from twenty twenty two, here's what we see. We see as kind of leading indicator lagging indicator relationship suggests that the proficiency trend follows what's happening a year or two later from what we saw in growth, right? So we see school A started at pretty low proficiency. Their average was below partially proficient. And over the past four years has moved much closer to proficient, whereas school B started above proficient average and has gone down. And what's interesting and I want to highlight here, here's the kind of, I keep coming back to that statutory language of impacts in the current year. When we look at this leading indicator here, the lagging indicator has not yet caught up with this change in growth. And that's what we can kind of see, like the closest relationship, we've got kind of a flat line here and a year later we see a flat line here, right? We see a decrease here and later we see a decrease here. We see increase, 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 increase. This leading indicator tells us that likely this school is going to face some problems next year, right? So if proficiency is what we're focused on, this leading indicator, if a school leader, if a principal is talking with his staff about what they're seeing here, this is going to provide this leading indicator information that's helpful to both schools in terms of where are we heading? If we have these proficiency goals, what instructional practices were we doing? What was happening that was influencing our leading indicator, which is going to be a lot more closely tied to a school's actions in that given year? So I'll, I'll, again, like Sean said, I'll hold for questions just because that kind of this was a concept. We'll come back to this. I want to hit on one of the other questions that came up, which is, you know, I said, here I'm using this kind of clean growth measure uh, on the bottom. One of the things that we're seeing, and I've got some, some things to illustrate, I kind of, I want to, I'll hustle through these to kind of get to the illustration of the concept that was brought up. But let me highlight what's happening and been described in our current growth measure. So we use student growth percentiles. That's a comparison of each student, how much they improved compared to their academic peers. And then there's a performance level accelerator. So this is what's been mentioned. This is that place that is kind of designed to balance out proficiency, but you can get, for instance, excuse me, double points for minimally proficient students who had high growth, right? And let's see, I'm brushing through. I feel bad ignoring questions, but I'm going to, I'm going to kind of hit this growth stuff and then we'll capture all the questions. The key growth question that was kind of presented in this study uh, session and outline. Number one, should student growth be weighted uniformly in the scoring system regardless of the student's prior year proficiency level? So again, we have currently that multiplier that kind of amplifies results for minimally proficient students or lower performing students. So key question number one, should we wait it uniformly? And key question number two, should any of the indicators, uh, if we, if we take that accelerator out of growth, should any of the indicators include a bonus or additional weighting to recognize schools that significantly improve outcomes for students most in need of support? So for example, students moving from minimally proficient to partially proficient. So those are the two key questions. Again, I'll, I'll hit some of the concepts and then we'll come back and kind of unpack all of this with questions. So the intended benefits of the current system, it's supposed to support vulnerable students. It's supposed to kind of reward schools for making gains with minimal proficient students above and beyond uh, what it rewards for students at other performance levels. It's supposed to provide rigorous and actionable insight on learning. Again, growth takes into account, it's that leading indicator, it's most closely tied to what's happening at a school this year. So the idea is that's where you're going to be able to make the most actionable decisions. Coming back to that, those trend lines we saw, that growth indicator tells schools what they need to be focused on and where they're heading. Proficiency is going to take longer to catch up with that signal. And then, as we mentioned, there was a design to balance out proficiency. That accelerator, you know, obviously in the proficiency indicator, minimally proficient students get zero points. In the growth indicator, minimally proficient students can get the most points if they demonstrate high growth. So the design was to be a balance, but again, it creates those concerns that have kind of been highlighted about when we mix proficiency and growth measures or mix those leading and lagging indicators, it makes it harder to get information from either one. Here's some of the challenges that that Dr. Higerman brought up. And as he mentioned, you know, he's, he's got experience in the schools. It can give some confusing results and the communication can become unclear. So that's a result of a couple of different things. If we look this black line here, this would be a one-to-one direct relationship between how schools are growing. So average student growth on the bottom, just that clean growth measure uh, versus how many points we're assigning them in the system. If we had a direct relationship, just one-to-one, then all the schools would be along this line, right? We just say, hey, if you, if your students grow more, you'll get more points. If they grow less, you'll get fewer points. And it goes kind of zero to a hundred. We assign them along this kind of curve. And this shifting over the top happens because of the score bunching here, right? So I talked about there's that accelerator where schools can get double points if they have a minimally proficient student who has high growth, but it's capped. So technically in an elementary school, schools could earn up to a hundred points, but we cap that at fifty. So what ends up happening is we get all this bunching here at the top, which reduces the information we can get about a school based on growth, right? If there's a lot of scores that look really similar, it makes it harder to tell, well, is this a, is this a school that earned a hundred points and got capped at fifty? Or is it a school that just barely earned fifty? Those look the same in the final tally. So it becomes a lot harder to say, is is the school doing something good or bad here? And I've got some slides if it's helpful at the end where we can kind of see the impacts of that where we have this nominal weight of fifty percent uh, of growth in K eight schools. That's supposed to tell fifty percent of the story. Because of this bunching, it ends up telling a lot less of that story. It has a lot less impact on the final grade if it was, as it would compare to if it were uncapped, right? So the effective weight, the nominal weight is at fifty, but the effective weight is lower and it ends up giving us less information because we're losing all this information that's up here. The other challenge is it creates kind of an uneven playing field for schools that don't serve a lot of low performing, minimally proficient students. And again, the main problem here is that creates confusing communication out. So I've picked two schools. I picked the most extreme example of this. Both of these schools have the same average student growth percentile, so the same growth. However, it's radically different points because this school has the multiplier affecting them differently. You've got a school here with an average growth, uh, student growth of fifty two. You got thirty seven points, same exact student growth of fifty two up here, got fifty points. And if you follow, you know, if you drop a line along the X axis, what you see is there's a whole range, you know, this is the most extreme where it's a thirteen point difference. But there's all kinds of differences for these schools in this exact same growth. Their students had, they, they managed to to grow their students the same amount as all these other schools, but they're awarded very differently, right? And that happens all along this. Anytime you drop a line down that X axis, you can see a wide range of growth outcomes, or excuse me, point outcomes for the same exact student growth.
And Sean, just to clarify that, the difference there is because of that multiplier for moving students who are minimally proficient out of minimally proficient. So it's, it's that difference is really based on the number of minimally proficient students available to those schools and how they move. So just to clarify, like, that's, that's what's causing that. Okay.
Thank you. Yes, that's exactly right. And then uh, did you want to jump in for a couple of questions?
I'm sorry, Sean, can I just say, but we don't necessarily know the kids move though. They just got listed as the highest performing of that kids that got the same thing. Isn't that correct?
Uh, I can, I can jump to a visual here in a second that kind of shows, you know.
You can hold it as my question because one of the dilemmas is with comparative growth, it doesn't necessarily show that the kid actually in 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 our notions of growth actually grew.
Exactly, exactly. So I'll jump into that here. I'll, I'll show you one there as well. Sean Rickert?
I was just going to say, I mean, that, this was by design. You know, the, the, the purpose behind putting the weights in place was to recognize that, you know, like in in your example here, you know, you've got two schools and that there are differences in those schools. And because of that, the growth that one school achieves gets them more points in the system so that so that that school has as much opportunity to achieve a high letter grade as the lower school, which is going to pick up a lot more points on the proficiency side of the equation than than the upper one, you know, so. So it, if it looks like a glitch or it looks like something that, you know, that must be addressed, keep in mind, it wasn't, this wasn't an accident. This was something that was quite intentional in terms of how the system was developed back in seventeen.
Sean Rickert brings up a really good point. And and again, it comes back to that nature of this is something that's only become, uh, it, like I said, it's, it's a design. It's not a, it's not a bug that nobody was aware of. It's only become a, and and a discussion point as we've moved to indicator scoring. So if I can kind of summarize, uh, and and correct me if I'm wrong on on the decision-making and thinking at the time. But the idea was in proficiency, students who are, schools that serve minimally proficient students, and they've got a lot of struggling students, are going to get nothing in the proficiency indicator. There's nothing going to show up in that lagging indicator in our current system. And so because it was a summative to balance that out, we're going to go into growth indicator and we're going to start showing some of what's happening in that growth indicator by kind of bringing in some of the lagging data. What we may want to consider in going forward, this will be the work that the tax look at. But coming back to that key question, in an indicator scoring world, should we separate this out so that it's a clean weighted thing? That prompts the next question, that second key question, what do we need to do in other indicators to then solve that dynamic that Sean Rickers saying and and, you know, what I would say is in an indicator scoring scenario, what we probably need to do is reexamine. If the lagging indicator is causing us difficulty where schools that are doing good work with struggling students don't show it all in the lagging indicator, we may want to look at what kind of things we have, how we're reporting the lagging indicator. Don't show it all in the lagging indicator, we may want to look at what kind of things we have, how we're reporting the lagging indicator. And if we're going to keep the. Leading indicator of growth clean. And so it is kind of a tr- a decision point, that key question of, do we go ahead and keep this dynamic? So that we have some balance coming through the leading indicator? Or do we want to adjust how we're reporting the lagging indicator so that that data on? Positive outcomes, like Sean said, these high points for this school is because they achieved really exceptional success for struggling students. Do we want that to show up in the leading indicator or do we want to show that in how we report in the lagging indicator? That's kind of the decision point that we're talking about right now as far as the even weighting.
And those questions are coming when you get to proficiency as well, Sean.
Mm-hmm, right, exactly. Um, so let me show one more quick dynamic here and, and again, um, coming back to Sean Ricker's point. These were designed intentionally, we're just talking about if we, they're becoming more visible when we see them with growth standalone. And so I'll hit Sean Ricker's, uh, or excuse me, I'll hit this next visual and then I'll jump to member Hagerman's question about, you know, does growth really actually measuring academic gains? Or is it just kind of norming itself out? Um, so the growth relationship and this is, it, it, it can. The year-to-year changes when a school has success or, um, serves a slightly different population from year to year. It can create confusing feedback for that school when we have that accelerator and that proficiency data brought into. This leading indicator growth data, um, so what we'll kind of see here. Again, here's a, here's a line and what this line is just showing is a direct relationship, right? Growth goes up, points go up. If I put a different line here with a negative slope, that would indicate that the. You know, if it was perpendicular to this, that would indicate that the relationship was completely broken. When your growth goes up, points go down. So what we're going to see is that sometimes these points travel along a kind of contrary thing where you'll get, you'll get. One growth outcome, you know, increase, for example. And your point outcome will go the opposite direction, um, or stay the same. And so what I'm going to try and illustrate here, you see the red points and the blue points. Ideally, they should move up and down this line, you know, growth goes up, points go up, both the growths are down, points go down. They should not be moving this direction in this negative relationship. Um, and I've highlighted one school where we kind of see every one of these outcomes over a period of three years. Where we'll see growth increase and points go down, so we'll end up down here, we'll see growth decrease. And points go up and it ends up over here and then we see growth decrease and points stay the same. And so it just makes this horizontal movement. And you also notice that the red and the blue schools mix and cross over that line quite a bit. Um, there goes growth decreasing, points go up, growth decreasing, points stay the same. Again, twenty twenty-two, growth goes up, points goes down. Next year, they get the exact opposite signal and it stays the same. And as you can see, all the red and blue points kind of mixing, this is about, uh, twenty percent of schools are affected by this. All the gray dots are doing what they're supposed to, their growth goes up and down, their points go up and down. But about twenty percent of schools get hit with this kind of confusing signal where they'll make progress with their students, they'll increase their student growth. But they'll be rewarded fewer points or vice versa. They'll decline in student growth and they'll get extra points, um. So let me pause that animation so we're not watching ants run around, um. Can I, uh, so we take questions, should I jump to kind of the, whether or not the growth measure is doing what we want it to do?
I have a question.
Yep.
Um, this is very interesting, it seems as though the system has been designed. To give the right incentives to the schools, so we want principals at the end of the year to look at their growth as well as their proficiency. But there's another function that the, that, uh, these grades play, uh, which is not performing well. And that is, it's the function of communicating to the public what school they want to send their child to in a such system of open enrollment. Um, and it would appear to me that it might be better, when you mix together growth and proficiency in one score. You get very confusing signals to the public, uh, you know, they're outraged when they say this school had an A and they've got twenty percent proficiency. So it would seem to me, one thing to consider is two separate grades, one for growth and one for proficiency. So that if you have a bright child and you want them challenged, you look at proficiency. If you have a child that's not doing well and you want to have teachers who are good at, at increasing, uh, their proficiency. You'd look at the growth, um, and that, that would be a system that would be a better communication to the public than the mixture that we have now.
I think you're right, Superintendent, and you know, you, you bring it back to that, that research point about the clear communication. If we've got good communication to school leaders right now, that's great. But if we don't have it to the public, there's that, that disconnect, right? Um, and I'll, I'll, I'll use one of your funny stories, you know, like superintendent likes to cite where they did a research study to see, you know, like what was happening. And it turned out instructional time, uh, really helped students and the, the, the researcher model said you needed a research study to tell you that. But like this research finding where we say, you know, it's going to work better if, if our policymakers, our school leaders and our community members. The research says if they can all three get clear communication, we're going to have better accountability. It's that same kind of thing, it's like you almost don't need a research study to tell you that, that like clear communication for everyone is going to work best. Um, and so, yeah, that's, that's thoroughly grounded in the research. Um, there's a little annotate button covering up my slide navigation here, so we're going to have to jump around. Remember, correct me as well, I'm, oh, go ahead.
No, I would just add in quickly, that, that is also one of the purposes of the forthcoming indicator scoring is to provide, there will be a summative letter grade where there is the mix. Um, in order to produce one overall grade and then there will be the grades for the indicator. So yeah, that, that transparency and communication is, is what we're working towards.
Correct, yeah, thank you. Remember, correct me.
Yeah.
Hi, I just want to echo the superintendent's comments as well, I think everybody's comments have been spot on. But what I keep coming back to, because I hadn't looked at the statute forever, is the statutory mandate of these. If you could go back and I don't even, just email it to me or text it or put in the chat, so I want to really chew on that. Because I mean, to me, this is all about values and what you want the system to do. I mean, brilliant minds like you and Damian Bettin-Better and all the people out there can design a system to do what we want to do. But I think that's the question is, what do we want it to do? But for us as a board, more importantly, what has the legislature said that they want it to do? Because if we want it to do something different, we may have to do, we may have to go that route.
And I think, you know, Sean Ricker helped us understand the, the impetus for that legislation. Um, that it was brought by a school superintendent who was trying to accomplish exactly the goals you're describing. And what's funny, I was presenting at a, at a meeting at one point, you know, I said, hey, you know, the, the, the work that. The, the tax and the board staff and the department is trying to do with indicator scoring, we want it to have this better communication. We want it to be clear what's happening. And, you know, we're trying to meet that statutory intent and a guy in the audience raises like, he's like, I'm the superintendent who proposed that. And yes, that's exactly what we were trying to accomplish was, we wanted to be clearer that when schools are having positive outcomes in one area. It may not show in all areas, you know, we like to say a lot of times like, schools can probably do anything, but they can't do everything in a given year, right? So when, when they're working on school improvement, it's helpful if different measures communicate progress. Uh, like Superintendent Horn said, like, are we moving forward in proficiency, are we moving forward in growth? If we're moving forward in growth, that's going to lead to proficiency. So it, I, I appreciate everybody's thoughtful comments on this because it, it really is right at the crux of the matter is. When we're trying to meet this statutory intent of indicator scoring. There's an intention behind that, that, that ideally benefits everybody who's involved.
And real quick, just, remember, Krivikas, board staff will send you, uh, uh, all the whole board, uh, relevant statutes. When we send out the recording for the, um, for this session.
Thank you, because I think obviously things have changed since we initially passed this in what, two thousand eight, nine, somewhere, like the idea of letter grades. And I think it's important for us to all kind of really think about what the intent is now.
Thank you, yeah, and so I'm going to, I'm going to do a call back here to a question that, uh. Member Hagerman had, and that member Krivikas had brought up, uh, a while ago, so the normative measure of the, the growth indicator, right? Um, and this is a concern we hear a lot, uh, and I kind of describe it as, you know, like if it's a normed measure. I described it as either like the Little League or the Olympic athlete dilemma where, you know, if you're, if you're using a normative measure. On the Olympic athletes and the Little Leaguers, you could end up in a situation where you're saying the worst Olympic athlete is an F. And the best Little Leaguer is an A, and so when you're trying to compare like, oh, this guy's an A, this guy's an F. And it kind of doesn't make sense because it's really just getting normed out. Um, and so, well, we have, we have to monitor that closely in our growth measure. That is, that potential is there, if all the schools were just doing horribly and we're just saying, oh, the best of the worst has high growth. And if all the schools are doing great and we're saying, well, somebody has to be an F because they're the lowest, it's, you know, it's graded on a curve, we'd have real problems. Um, so we monitor this real closely every year when we produce that growth measure and we have ways to, uh, if we see a problem there, we can use. Rather than norming it to the specific year, you can kind of tie it to what it was before. Um, there's methods you can control for that, but what I want to show here is, this is a look at all, uh, students taking tests that have a growth. Uh, measurement, uh, since twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five, all students, all grades, all subjects. And what, what you can see on the right side Y-axis here, we've got low growth, average growth, high growth. And here we've got their, uh, prior year, their performance from the prior year. Uh, so this is minimally proficient all the way to highly proficient. If it's working correctly, what we should see, so all these colors are color-coded to what their change was in their performance level in a given year, right? And for context, if I'm partially proficient and I grow what we can call a year's worth of growth. So I'm moving, I'm, I'm a fourth grader and I'm partially proficient and I moved to fifth grade in one year of growth. I will likely be partially proficient again, right? I've moved up a grade level, but I'm still maybe not quite proficient at fifth grade where I wasn't quite proficient at fourth grade. If I move from partially proficient to proficient, that's showing multiple years' worth of growth, right? I've now passed kind of the point that I was at compared to all fifth graders and I've moved to a higher performance level. Not only, it's not like I was just moving to a higher performance level in a fourth grade test. I moved grades to more rigorous content and I moved up a performance level. So a change in, change in one performance level indicates very high levels of growth, kind of like two years of instruction. A decrease means they're falling behind and what we would expect to see if growth is working correctly. That high growth would correspond to these cool range of colors where we're seeing one or more performance levels worth of growth. So we've got, where, what we're seeing is when we report high growth, we are largely seeing real academic gains that show up on the test. And when we say low growth, they're not just staying the same, so gray is anybody that's kind of stayed at the same proficiency level. We don't see people staying the same so much, we see them decreasing, again. You get on the extremes here, fours can't go higher than fours, ones can't go lower than ones. So you see it kind of taper off because there's not room for changing performance levels at the top. But largely what we do see is across years, across grade level, across subjects, when we report high growth. That corresponds to actual academic gains and when we report low growth, it reports, it corresponds to actual decreases. Um, if there were no, the, the situation like that normative problem that we described, that would happen if there was. Kind of not this much difference in what we see, but when we look at real student results, there's enough of a difference that the normative measures. Start to be a good description of what's really happening in terms of a criteria of increasing level of decreasing on the test. That was a lot of information to pack into one graph, will we stop there for questions?
Hey Sean, it's Carla again, um, I feel like I'm reaching my, my cognitive load on this stuff right now, is that, is that appropriate use of that term?
Yeah, I think so.
Um, are we suggesting on this slide, although I'm going to need to, you're going to need to go through this with me privately a couple of times, the slide's a lot. But are we suggesting the possibility of changing the way we calculate growth? Because that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting out of this, is that there may be different alternative ways to calculate growth. I mean, we've been wedded to SGP's for a long time and I, I understand there were reasons why and why a lot of people still use them. But obviously there's shortcomings, which we're all discussing and this slide seems to say to me that there's room to develop a separate way to do it.
Uh, yeah, thank you, remember Krivikas, I think you could, uh, you could make that case. Um, the case I would make on this slide, what it says to me is probably that, um, the challenges we're facing with growth. Aren't really coming from the SGP model, like that's performing as desired. And, and that's, I've spoken with colleagues around the country as well to kind of see, you know, like value-added models, um, growth tables, like there's different options. Um, in general, uh, I think it's twenty-nine out of, uh, what, the fifty-two, um, you know, Department of Defense and all, everything. Um, the majority of states use student growth percentiles, uh, because it does tend to perform very well as far as capturing what's really happening. And, and I think what you said, like, uh, the, the potential weaknesses of it need to be assessed. And checked on a yearly basis to make sure that it's still continued, because it does have, like you've said, like. And, and, and you brought this up importantly several times, like this is a normative measure, we need to remember that it's a normative measure. And unless somebody's keeping an eye on that, we could have problems. So it's important that we keep an eye on it and make sure that the norms are actually performing. To the criteria that we would expect them to, so I can say confidently right now, like, the challenges that we face with growth. Are not due to the student growth percentile model, there's a lot of technical advantages to using that model that I can kind of get into, but, um, but, um. As a shorthand takeaway, I think we can safely say that we are wisely using the student growth percentiles model, um. Should we continue layering stuff onto it, that's, that's kind of the, I think that's the main question before the board. Um, and, but then always with that word of caution that you've, you've emphasized, like, remember it's normative and we got to check this every year. We can't just take it for granted that this is working just fine every year just because.
And for the record, I love your Olympic example, I use the ranking of NFL quarterbacks all the time and remind people that number thirty is still one of the best quarterbacks in the entire world.
Exactly, exactly. Remember, hi, Trevor.
Thank you so much and Carla, thank you for bringing a voice to that cognitive, uh, overload. I'm like, okay, am I the only one? I know I'm around very gifted and brilliant people on this board, but I was feeling the same way, so thank you for, for voicing that out. I think, um, I have been sharing at different board meetings, how excited I am for a new state standardized assessment. That actually, uh, shows what kids, um, are able to do. I do believe strongly that the current state standardized assessment that we have is very flawed. So then these student growth percentiles, I think that's a, a better job of describing what's actually happening. Because when Superintendent Horn mentioned right now, you know, if you have an A and you have a twenty or thirty or forty percent of kids achieving. Where's that, that discrepancy and the dissonance and I think that's it, I think that's it, I think it's like. No, that if you actually, uh, go into the schools and in the classrooms and you see what kids are doing. It doesn't relate back to that twenty, twenty-five, thirty, forty, fifty percent, um, of what we see. Um, so I think more than anything, I don't know, I, I don't know what comes first, the chicken or the egg. I think it's more the assessment than the actual, um, way of measuring, uh, what students know and are able to do and how teachers are performing. Um, the other thing that I really like, Carla, is I getting that legis, uh, that legislative, uh, bill, the, the law. On, um, letter grades, because since that law passed, we've also expanded our school choice options very significantly. Um, so we have systems that are being measured by these letter grades and then we have systems that are not. I personally have used old school choice models for my, for my daughters, uh, grown women now. But I have one, uh, that went to a prestigious old girl school that, um. Begged to be pulled back to her, uh, traditional public school feeling that the instruction was far inferior, but they were not measured by the same state standardized assessment. So I don't know how families would know that information.
So, uh, Sean, just to, to table set, thank you, Dr. Hightower, remember Krivikas. Um, I, number Krivikas had asked a kind of a larger question, um, this, this graph in your view actually shows that the current growth system is working. Yeah, so, so let's just table set that because she asked, is it showing it is or it isn't working? It actually shows it is working in, in what it's reporting. So I want to just kind of to table set that. And then just for kind of the sake of time, I, I think you've done a really good job of laying out the, some of the concerns about growth, how growth is impacted by the current inclusion of the accelerator for minimally proficient and how that's sort of impacting some of that bunch scoring. Do you have another point about growth you want to emphasize? Or do you think now, given time, maybe we should kick proficiency? Cause it's gonna, it's gonna dovetail back into that growth conversation.
Yeah, let's jump to proficiency and thank you. Yeah. And, and please, I appreciate the comments on cognitive overload. I know we're going, we're, we're covering a lot of ground here. So please, please, please jump in, tell me, I'll give a two sentence summary of kind of the findings on growth, which is currently we're mixing leading lagging indicators that can cause some confusion. Our growth metric is sound. We want to ask questions about how we report that. And we'll jump into proficiency now, right now, because that determines the challenges that we're going to see with proficiency may determine how we address the challenges that we see with growth. So the current proficiency measure, when we report school proficiency, and, and I liked, Member Hightower, you mentioned Superintendent Horn's example. I, I think that really gets to it, right? When we say proficiency, I, I thought of like a, a medical chart, you know, proficiency, a lagging indicator, it's gonna be kind of like, oh, you came into the hospital, let me look at your medical history. That's like your proficiency and let me see how you're responding to treatment right now. That's growth, right? I think most people look at proficiency as they think it's a leading indicator. It's like, ah, this school has achieved, it's like, well, that's a lot of history. When we look at, it gives context to growth. So let's look at how that history is or is not communicating well, what's happening at the school. So the current thing we do is we, excuse me, we take an average of the schools, kind of the, the easiest way to say is we, we like average their test scores, right? But we assign different weights currently based on different performance levels. And so what you can see here, minimally proficient gets zero, highly proficient gets 1.3. And what I want to highlight for you is that the spread between each of these points that we award in the proficiency indicator is different. You've got a real long spread here where this is going to, you know, if this was a seesaw, the balancing point is right here and that minimally proficient is going to weigh really heavily, right? So when, when Sean Rickert described, you know, that design of the system, part of that was driven by this very heavy weight that minimally proficient has, there's kind of a decelerator in proficiency, like in the proficiency indicator for students performing at this level, right? So we have an accelerator built into growth because there's a bit of a decelerator built in here. So again, these different weights are going to create mathematical sifts when we kind of lump them all together and average them into an, into one measure. The key question for proficiency, should the scoring system award points across multiple proficiency levels? So partially proficient, proficient, highly proficient, or should it use a binary pass rate approach that distinguishes only between proficient and not proficient? I'll just be upfront with, with my research perspective on this and what I've seen in practice and the statutory intent. So the statute, statute says at a minimum, the methodology shall include the performance of pupils at all achievement levels. Account for pupil mobility, account for the distribution of pupil achievement at each school. So statutory intent to me is pretty clear there. It wants to recognize the movement that happens, not just between proficient and, and not proficient, but also amongst moving up or moving down. And that it's supposed to take into account that there are different distributions of pupil achievement at, at each school. Some schools are going to have really high population come in, some are really going to have low population coming in. And again, this comes back to, this is where Sean Rickert highlighted that that intentional design of the system as a whole was meeting this goal of accounting. When we looked at those kind of growth changes, that was designed to account for the distribution of people achievement at each school, recognizing that not everybody is going to get the exact same sample of student ability at every school. I'll come back to the research foundation. We see from the research and again, it's, it's fairly intuitive. If you focus too highly on that bubble line, you're going to get inadvert, inadvertent incentive for schools to focus on just the students that are, you know, it doesn't do, if it doesn't do you any good to move a student from minimally proficient to partially proficient, you're going to focus your efforts on where you've got some gains, like this kid's only three points away from passing. We're going to put a lot of interventions in place for that kid. Not too worried about the honor student, they're going to be fine. So again, that's, that's for me, that's the research foundation, the statutory foundation and the practice principle about binary versus taking into account all performance levels. And then the second proficiency question is, should the overall performance measure be normative? Where the highest school gets 100%, we grade them all on the curve. The lowest school gets zero. Should it be a criterion based reference? So B is what we currently have, where there is criteria and the current criteria to get full points is essentially it'd be 100% pass rate. If you need, if you want to get full points in the current proficiency indicator, you need to have the equivalent of all students passing. So criterion referenced at a high standard. Or should the criteria, should it be criterion based and informed by the data? Kind of aligned to a SMART goal framework, right? So emphasizing, is it achievable and time bound? When we look at the data, do we set an achievable goal for a certain amount of time? Right now, we have this kind of criterion based reference that is not necessarily taking into account the achievable aspect. And it's just fixed for all time. It is always what it is, rather than having some built in stages to increase that goal over time. Number Krevikas?
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I want to touch on B because I may need some clarification. Cause the way I understand our current system, it's not criterion based at all. I mean, it's very much, it's very much on a curve.
Thank you. Yeah. When we get to the summative grade overall.
I didn't interrupt you, but let me take that step back. When we're setting cut scores, we're setting the cut scores on a curve. So that's why in my mind, it's not truly criterion based. I'm not advocating for that quite yet, but I'm just saying, I don't see it as criterion based at all. Cause we determine the, the cut set, that we set the cut points on a curve.
So I think that's a good reference point. Well, we, you know, like, cause we always present, you know, here's the mean and standard deviation, those normative measures. And so what the board has typically done is taken an informed approach based on, all right, well, here's where the norm is right now, and then set a cut score as a criteria that hasn't changed. So that cut score that we've looked at summatively has remained fairly criterion referenced where it's been that goal. And the norms have changed around it over the years. And, and, and so it's, it's kind of a mixture of both, you know, I've got, I've, I've heard someone describe it as, you know, if you scratch it, if you scratch a criterion, you'll see a norm. Most, most criteria are established by what's realistically possible. And what the dynamic that's happening in proficiency, again, since the indicators don't have individual cuts or goals, functionally, the criteria right now is to earn full proficiency points. You have to have 100% proficiency. So it's, it's an unofficial criterion that's been, you know, it does not adjust, it does not adjust to anything that happens in schools or data, it didn't adjust to the pandemic. If you wanted full proficiency points, you had to get 100% proficiency. So that proficiency criteria had, does not adjust at all. And it has not had a goal set by kind of the normative. A lot of times we're going to look at those normative measures to see where an appropriate criterion reference goal would set. Sean Rickert, do you want to jump in?
Sure. No, I, I just wanted to mention that, you know, within the discussions at the ATAC, you know, this, this has been a, a question we've wrestled with along the same lines that, that Carla's bringing up. You know, but, but the problem is if you make it easier for everyone to get the proficiency points, now you've made it, you've, you've given the appearance that, that the overall system is performing at, at a high level. Which, you know, if, if we upset the balance, as it were, I mean, we, we know that we already, we've seen the percentage of stu, schools that are scoring in the A and B range increase, you know, as, as the years have gone by, which could be seen as a good thing. You know, depending on the, the policy lens of, of whether or not having a, an accountability system that, you know, provides more schools with that high, high rank is, is the goal of, of the system. So.
Right. And I do think that's a key question, as Sean mentioned, that is kind of in the sticking point that the TAC has been at is like, are we, are we just generating grade inflation? It doesn't signal any kind of performance, which we don't want to do. When I look at it, one of the, the lenses that I've kind of grappled with is in the statute, it talks about that the overall system is supposed to be a measure of school quality, right? So as Sean mentioned, we don't want to, we want to make sure that there is reporting around student needs around proficiency. But we do also have to make an interpretation about what those student needs say about school quality. And again, that comes back to that fundamental proficiency is a lagging indicator, right? It's going to bring a lot of additional information historically with it beyond just what was the impact of the school that year. So I think to Sean's point, we need to set a rigorous goal. We don't want grade inflation to happen. We just say like, hey, everything's fine, nothing to look at here. We need it to report to schools when they're in trouble, when they're not. Superintendent Horn pointed out, communities need to be able to understand that. But I would argue also that when we're taking that and interpreting proficiency and trying to map that on to school quality, again, one is what do students need? Here's their test score. That can be separate from what school quality is, right? There can be great schools that serve very low performing students. And there can be, as Member Hightower mentioned, there can be very poor schools that serve a lot of very highly performing students. So we need the signal to kind of respond to that. And, and, and again, you have to be careful, as Sean Rickert said, where you don't just say, oh, we're going to make this an easy threshold that anybody can get, we're just going to say everything's fine and proficiency all the time. But that's why I kind of put that SMART framework here is a SMART goal is going to have something that's achievable, but also time bound that allows for adjustment. Our current system, let me, let me talk to the achievable part, but I can talk to the time bound right now. There's, there's not a threshold for saying like, hey, here's our proficiency goal for this year. Here's an achievable goal. This is what we want to have in this year, two years, whatever. And in three years, we're going to gradually increase that. Right now we have something that I think leads more to some of the concerns that Sean Rickert expressed where we can kind of see measures shifting and things look okay when we're not seeing the accomplishment of some of the goals that we want. So let me, let me just reference again, here's what I mean by data informed context. And, and it goes to that point, you don't want to set your goal too high or too low. If you're operating, you know, if you're looking at airline safety and the number of crashes the, a airline has, 99.9%, that's an F, that is really, really bad. A goal of 99.9% success rating landing the plane is terrible. However, if you're talking baseball batting average, 36% is basically the best there's ever been. So that's an A. So the data context is important. Again, setting a goal for an airline of 99% success is too low. Setting a goal of a batting average, okay, I want you to get, you know, 50%. Well, that's impossible. So we have to set it at the right point for where the data is now so that schools can work towards that and we can incrementally set time bound goals that, that moves that forward. So let me show you where the data is currently. These plots show the distribution, so this is 22, 23, 24, 25 for each graph. Orange are K8 schools, red are 912 and blue are alternative. These are called violin plots. My old boss used to describe them as anaconda plots. He's like, okay, most of the data is like, if you look at the snake, wherever it swallowed its food, that's where most of the data is. So look for the, the fat part of the snake and that's where most schools are kind of at, right? So typically what, here's the threshold for a current, and I'll call it an A. This is what gets you 90% of proficiency points. So we're saying, hey, this school performed at such a level that we're going to award them 90% of the available points to get an A. What the board has typically looked at as a cut line is the mean and standard deviation. So this line shows, here's where the average is, and again, you'll see it much lower in alternative schools. Here's a standard deviation above our current cut point for 90% of the points, an A level is much closer to two standard deviations above the mean. Statistically, we know that that's going to represent about 1.5% of the data. So 1.5% of schools currently are going to get a, an A in proficiency. I'm not saying that's a good or a bad goal. That might be the perfect goal. Like we want to say an A in proficiency represents you're in the top 1% of all schools statewide. Maybe that's what we want. What I, what I want to, the argument I would make is that we want to make that cut intentional. If we want it to communicate that this is the top 1% of all schools, cool. Let's set it that, but let's do that knowingly. I think right now, there's just not a general awareness about if you want I level of proficiency points, what does that really mean? Right now it means you're two standard deviations above average. If you're, if you're in kind of a range for, excuse me, for proficiency. So let me pause right there. Again, I think I've, I, if I have not made everybody cognitively overload, I'm really underperforming. So let's pause there for a minute and just answer some questions and digest before we jump into anything else.
So I, I kind of just goes back to Member Hightower's question about the assessment. And what's the interrelationship between the assessment and the accountability system? Because isn't some of this proficiency related to an assessment that's supposed to be kind of matched to a, a national norm? And therefore you end up with things that are in the 35 to 40 range to meet that norm. But then when we look at it as a system, that's a hundred point system, it comes up with data that doesn't necessarily, the public understand what to do with.
Exactly. I think we're just throwing those numbers out like, hey, it's 35%. People are like, that's awful. Like, well, yeah, I mean, for an airline, but not for baseball. It, it, the context as you're describing, Dr. Hagerman, is, I think incredibly important. And coming back to that again, research point, what, what shows a school improvement progress or when schools are going to improve out of the accountability systems, it tends to be when that communication is clear. So I think if we, if we look at what the data tells us and we can then categorize, hey, here's where a school's at in terms of performance level, you know, that might be 75%. If we just say 75%, everybody in the public is automatically going to think it's a C. The reality is they're outperforming almost every school in the state. It may be better for us to say, this is a good school in terms of proficiency and to interpret for the public, some of what we're seeing on the problems that Member Hightower, Member Krevikas have highlighted with the test, right? Like, all right, let's take those test results and not necessarily leave it to the public to say, hey, you're on your own for figuring out if this is good or bad. We'll help you understand the context. Sean Rickert?
Well, yeah, and, and one of the things we've seen too, in the conversations around cut scores and, you know, is that, you know, we, we talk about making changes, but we need to be mindful of the fact that you know, people, people look at it and expect to see something. When we change, if, if we were to dramatically change, you know, to, to where we lowered the, the current A line down to the one standard deviation line, that, that would, I, I worry about what that would say and how that would be interpreted when, when you get to that, that transparent communication. I, and thanks, that's a good question. I think that's one of the things I've grappled with as well is, and, and Sean Rickert's brought this up in many of our TAC meetings, is, you know, one of the broad principles agreement unstated that we've heard both from the board and the field over the years is consistency. They don't want this to just jump all over the place radically to now what used to be an A is now a C or what used to be a D is now an A.
I think when the work goes to the tax, we want to ask those questions about how do we keep the communication when, you know, when we wrap this all up? So we've got one level where we're starting to open it and say, here's what's happening in each of the indicators. It would make a lot of sense to have the summative system communicate roughly the same signal where if we have, you know, right now we have about, uh, 32% of schools are As. If that radically, you know, that doubles all of a sudden under this new thing and it's 66%. We probably need to evaluate what message we're sending because it's exactly like Sean Rickert said. If something wild swing happens where now everybody's doing great, the public is going to find that confusing, not clear communication. So, um, well, a lot of the, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to, to just add in there. I mean, you know, when we talk about, we've got all these terms we throw around, I mean, we talk about consistency and the need to be consistent in how we treat schools. We talk about continuity in terms of assist, you know, the, the way that we have communicated the quality of a school across time. You know, going back a decade and now, you know, moving forward. And so, yeah, I mean, my, my concern is that, yeah, that, that if we lose the continuity, then you know, we've lost something great value. I mean, a lot of, a lot of school leaders, um, are very focused on, you know, hey, I've, I've taken my school from, you know, a starting point of, of a C. And now my school, uh, has, has achieved, you know, a, a letter grade of an A. Uh, and because of the continuity in the system, there's, there's value in that. I, I would hate to see us do anything, uh, that would negatively affect that, that value. I think, I think now that we can't do things to change it, but I mean, that's something we need to be cognizant of is the value of that continuity.
So Sean, um, Sean's, there are so very many of us on this call. We, uh, you know, this is a, you, you've done a really good job, uh, of table setting the, the current system, how the current system is functioning. The validity of the current system, that the current system is functioning, it is, it is giving the signal desired, but that as the tax have approached the work of looking at indicator scoring of uh, the, the metaphor we tend to use, the analogy we tend to use is of one of a cake, right? The summative system, what the tax were asked to build was a cake. And indicator scoring is now asking them to take the cake and pull out the egg, the oil, the water and the mix. You can tell I've never made a cake from scratch. And to look at those pieces as well. So it, it has created a new lens by which the tax are able to see the whole system. And that new lens has raised some questions with which the tack is very understandably struggling with. And I think everybody who's watched, is, is been in this part of the study session go, oh yeah, these are meaty questions. These are really, really intense questions, which again is the whole purpose of having these study sessions is to one, present the information, have the experts like Sean and Jason, uh, in the room and, and, um, you know, there to, to answer questions. And then sort of will design next steps, where to guide for the board to learn more and provide some guidance. And so, uh, I do want to be respectful of time. So, so just to, to explain to the board and to those watching, what those next steps will be is, uh, this, the study session has been recorded. It's archived on our YouTube page for the board. We will send out the recording to all board members. Uh, and actually the slide deck as well. For those of you watching, the slide deck is also available on the agenda. So you can go to the agenda on our webpage and download the slide deck. Uh, board members, we will also send you those statutes. And then board staff will work with board members to use this first study session as sort of a jumping off point for the next study session. What is it? We've got that we've captured some of the key questions you've asked along the way. What is the first sort of domino you would all would like to address in this proficiency and growth space? In order to help provide some guidance for the tax as they move forward as well. So, so this is a first in a series of study sessions. The other piece that, you know, really has emerged from this is that the, the complexity of this, right? The depth of this. And so, um, I just want to especially thank again, Sean, Toby, Sean, Rickert, Jason, all the folks from the, the ADE team, Jessica from our team, the, and the tax. Because these are, these are, are, are really complex questions. They both philosophically and mathematically. So, so again, what next steps will be is we're going to send you the appropriate materials. And then board staff will work with you with ADE's accountability team and the tax to craft what that next study session will be. And then the goal of these study sessions will be to, um, when appropriate, transition to a board meeting where the board can in a public setting with feedback from the field, vote on guidance to direct, to help direct the tax, uh, to answer and address some of these questions. Next steps to investigate, model and report back to the board on with data. So, um, any questions on that from anybody on the call?
I appreciate that, Sean. I think that one thing that I would add is that we also have to keep in mind that we will have a new assessment. So
Oh, yeah.
There has to be a consideration.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Hightower, actually very much for that. One of the reasons we're doing the study sessions, the timing of all of this, uh, is one, it's, it's a, you know, obviously a, a good chance to dive into the system. Two, help provide some guidance. But three, um, we are very much in assessment procurement season. And so, um, uh, the, yeah, the, the timing of this is not accidental and very excited to have those things happening around each other because this conversation will shape the assessment conversation and vice versa. And so it's nice that the board is working on all of that at the moment. So, thank you. Uh, any other questions?
I don't, I don't have any questions, but I just have, just a comment. Uh, first of all, thank you for this. I've been taking a lot of notes. Okay. Uh, all over, I guess sticky Milton and I had to stop and get my notebook. But, um, one of the things that, one of the challenges I have, or we have down here in Cochise County is that the language is not relevant and applicable to the public. When we have, we have the fort here, Fort Ochuka. And when I have to brief, um, the new kernels, et cetera, et cetera, who come, come into the, um, come on polls, come into Cochise County. It becomes very challenging. And you're talking about, you're talking a lot of engineers, et cetera, et cetera, to, to try to make things applicable so that it is, is, is normal language. So one thing I'm, I'm really concerned about is, and I think it was brought up that we change the language so that it's relevant and applicable, um, to the public so that they can make a good decision. But also so that the schools, I love the conversation where, okay, we have this type of outcome. And now we know what the school needs, et cetera, et cetera. So whatever we do, I just don't want to see the public eyes water anymore. You know, when I try to explain it to people because it's, I can see them, what do you call it? You know, when I, I know a lot of you are math people, but people who aren't, if it's not real and relevant, they start to check out in their head. Their eyes are open, they're looking at you, but they're checking out. And I just don't want the deer in the headlights anymore. I want us to be able, whatever we decide, the public has to understand it.
Yeah. Dr. Clay, uh, thank you for that. And that, that came forward in the feedback that Jessica shared in the beginning. The one thing I would emphasize is there's two, there's two pieces here. There is a technical side, there just is. There's no way that, that this system cannot, it has to exist in its own technical space. And those business docs, the business rules that we adopt, the board adopts each year, for example, kind of live in that technical space. But one of the things that has emerged in a lot of the feedback is the importance of equal attention to the other docs for community families. So that's definitely on the radar. We're, we're kind of addressing the technical pieces first. And then the, the translation documents will come. As a former English teacher, I am very in line with your current comment. Trust me, in these meetings with Sean and Sean and Toby, uh, I mean, I'm, you know, definitely not a math expert in the room. So, so we're very aware of that need to translate. We're going to sort of fix the technical first, and then that piece is absolutely there. All right. Well, thank you all so much. Board members will be following up, uh, very quickly here. Uh, again, huge thank you to Sean, uh, Smith and Toby. We are in letter grade release season. They have a big, they have big jobs, they have a lot of work going on. And they really took the time to, to do this work and present to the board. In fact, Sean was reaching out to us over the weekend about it, so giving up his own time. So just, I want to especially thank them, they're an amazing group and, uh, and definitely deserve a lot of kudos. So thank you, everybody. Uh, again, we'll be following up soon and, and as, and for the public, we will also, everything is from the board is done transparently. We'll be following up with announcements of next steps as well.